Sorry. I would like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the planning commission. Hannah, would you will you will call?
Commissioners present and establishing a forum. Commissioners Blair Lockhart, Lo Petrino excused as Commissioner Dawkins.
All right, we do not have anyone sign up for public comments tonight, so we will move on to agenda item four point one, approval of minutes from November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, and four point two approval minutes from December ninth, twenty twenty four. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the minutes? All move to approve the November twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four minutes. Move in second in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And is there a motion for December ninth?
Brandy, did you just raise your hand to oppose?
Sorry, no, I was trying to say aye, I'm just.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December nine.
Thank you. I will second them. All right, it's been moved in second in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on to new business. Seven point one, we have to do an election of the chair and vice chair. And would you like to?
Say before you start, I just wanted to let you know the mayor has three applications to fill the two vacancies. So if Brandy is willing to, I mean Melanie, sorry, if Melanie's willing to continue to run the meeting one more, you might want to wait one more, so you got at least Kelsey and hopefully two additional commissioners, but it's really up to you.
I'm okay either way, what is? Is anybody here interested? And?
I'd like to be in the whole commission very much.
Whole commission, all right. Um, then we will go ahead and move on if there's no, uh, nobody opposed.
Any motion?
I'd like, I'd like to ask for a motion to extend that.
On the way we continue the election of chairman, vice chair to the.
I'll second that motion. All right, motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Um, and then seven point two, we are actually going to also move back to the next meeting because Amy Wright is. So moving on to seven point three, the Monroe twenty forty four comprehensive plan. And we have Kate.
Yes, the rest of the evening is the Kate and Hannah show, so grab your popcorn and your soda. Uh, so after the comp plan is adopted, the next stage is starting all of the implementation. So the first thing that, um, that we're going to be looking at is the citywide rezone, and so I'm actually breaking this up into phase one and phase two. Phase one is the citywide rezone with the, I would call it low hanging fruit that we can do. And then phase two, my, my plan right now is to begin that in May. And that's more of the complicated changes for North Kelsey, uh, the general commercial along US two, the conversations around Main Street where we wanted to be very strategic about how we're making the changes to get those things that we want and discourage the things we don't want. Because it was included in the plan itself, but it's, it did not require citywide rezone, so that's where we're going to start. So Hannah has the map up as a reminder, that is what was adopted, the new. Oh, I'm sorry, can you go up one more? Let's keep on. There we go. So this is the, the new future land use map. Oh, question?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, I was just thinking how we have several businesses wanting to build like condominiums and then we have an apartment, different things. Would that change how much land we still need to meet the requirement?
So, um, oh, that's right, excellent question. So the council, they made two changes to this future land use map, the Strawberry Lane neighborhood was removed. And then a small piece along Chain Lake Road, both of those were proposed to go from residential to mixed use. We had enough land use capacity for both residential and commercial. So we did not need to make additional amendments elsewhere, so. Moving forward with what I'm presenting tonight and then the changes that will come later in the year, that will get us to where we need to be by twenty forty four. And the reality is, is you're going to be updating your comp plan in ten years. So you never really get to that full twenty.
And that's okay.
And that is a.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's pretty normal.
Okay.
Oh, yep, question?
Brandy?
Um, I remember the future land use map there. When it got finalized, um, with the consultants, there was something that wasn't quite right with it regarding. Um, I thought it was land use designation zoning around the commercial, uh, Highway two area. But I know it was in the notes that it was definitely going to get fixed and I'm, um, I'm wondering if is this that fixed version or are we still needing a fix to that?
No, this, this is the ultimate map, um, after many additional conversations with Alex. The way we're fixing that is if you go into the goals and policies of the land use chapter, that's where you're going to see the recommended change that will get us to the residential overlay and the general commercial. Cause the land use designation itself doesn't need to change. And so instead of doing a second map, that, that was the one thing that we had talked about here, we're going to have this future land use map, and then we're going to have another map that just kind of circle the areas that required additional work. Alex, um, after, like I said, after several conversations, his guidance was that might be confusing because it's not technically overlays. So the way to get there was to include it in the goals and policies, and that was done in the final land use chapter.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Good question. All right, so the changes that we will be focusing on this evening, uh, are really that northwest corner off of Robin Hood or Roosevelt Road to mixed use. Uh, the area south of five twenty two on Main Street, to Main Street on one seventy nine. And, um, all of the R four is going to R seven to increase the density and then the transportation, um, overall, or the transportation designation, which was just for five twenty two. And US two is being removed because it's right of way. So, um, we're down to the street ranges, yeah. Perfect. So this is the existing zoning map today, and so all of that pale yellow color, that's the R four or four dwelling units per acre. That is all being upzoned to residential seven, which is the brighter yellow in the northwest corner. And the reality, the way Monroe has been built over time was through PRDs. And so most of those developments are greater density than four units per acre already. That includes all of the Frylands, um, all of the Eaglemont developments. Um, several of the, the ones, I cannot remember that road, is it Rainier? You? Rainier Vista? Yeah, so basically, even though it's R four, it was developed at greater densities anyway, so it wasn't really a huge change. And we'll see a little bit of increased density to help us again achieve our goals. Yes.
Um, so we're eliminating all the R four.
Exactly.
We're not going to have it.
Yep.
So if it's R seven zoning, they don't have to build that density. For that's just the most they can.
Yeah, it's a maximum. The city of Monroe does not currently have a minimum density.
Okay, okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, okay, so the next several pictures are just illustrating those very specific changes, so the first two, so this is everything, uh, in the Frylands area that is going from R four to R seven. The next is the foothills of. Oh, yeah, the next one is the foothills neighborhood, which, um, R seven was designated after the foothills. So we're going to be making all of that same again, already developed, so we're not going to gain anything from that. Uh, the next one is everything north of US two that was zoned, uh, residential or. And there's that mixed use and based on the density that we were looking for in the comprehensive plan, what's recommended for this change is mixed use general. That will get us the best mix of commercial, which was also one of the items we looked at for this uh, particular area, and it also would allow for, um, attached housing, which is a minimum of three units and greater. It would allow for vertical mix, horizontal mix, so that, um, uh, is based on the zones that we currently have, the most appropriate. The next picture is just showing you all of the transportation, uh, zone that is going away. Again, that is the US two bypass, five twenty two and US two. The reason that we're removing this is if you read the zoning code, it kind of gives you some, um, false. It would seem you could do development that you actually cannot. It is right of way. And so roads, utility corridor, uh, limited public work type infrastructure would continue to be allowed in those areas. Uh, so the middle ones are all of the residential to mixed use general again, oh, excuse me. So based on the designation in the future land use map, this is actually neighborhood. Mixed use neighborhood, sorry. So it's a little bit less density, but it's getting us that mix that we talked about through the comprehensive plan process. So the general is more similar to general commercial, the neighborhood is a little bit less intensive. And then. Okay. And then, uh, the next one is the Smith Brother property that used to be, um, the roofing company off of North Kelsey. Um, so the history on this one, if you remember, they came early in the process and said, what did you do to us? We weren't expecting, um, the multifamily designation, which had been in the comprehensive plan since the nineties. Didn't actually get rezoned, uh, and the zoning, that is the law we follow, it's not the comp plan. And so they had been following the general commercial because that's what it's been. Even though the, the comp plan had said back in the nineties, we need, or we need multifamily here, never got rezoned. And the reality is that property is transitioning from industrial. Commercial is a better fit. And so, um, just the triangle, which includes two parcels, will be changed to uh, back to basically general commercial. And then finally, the food bank, uh, we are changing that designation, um, from residential to mixed use neighborhood as well. This one, um, when I came on in twenty two, you all were considering an interim zoning code change to allow food banks and residential when reality is it probably should just be designated. So it's consistent with, um, all of the public-ish properties to the west, which is the Boys and Girls Club, the Senior Center and the Park. And so that is the final, uh, map change that you'll be looking at through tonight. And then, uh, just kind of walking through your packet. Um, I showed you the specific code sections that require amendments. Oh, question? Yep.
The area that has the planes.
That's the what?
We have planes.
Yes.
That's the restricted building area due to the flight ground.
That is correct. And, um, I just give you a quick update on the airport, the PUD is still working on, um, their development agreement proposal that would go to the council, they've not yet bought the property. If they buy it, our understanding is they would close it and that layer would go away. But until that happens, it is still a general aviation facility. We are required to comply with the height and intensity, um, regulations within that thing.
Follow up.
Yeah.
What is all the unknowns?
The unknowns? Oh, um, that is, it just didn't have, um, they weren't sure who the property owner is. So the base map is from, uh, Sohamish County, and that actually is the, like on that very last one for the food bank. That is the food, that's the, uh, community garden. I think that's city property. Okay, so the changes in the zoning code to go with the map. The first one begins in your packet on page sixty seven, um, it's just the chapter that talks about the zoning map, and so the first actual change is on page sixty nine. It's just an elimination of the single family, uh, four units per acre. The next one is on page seventy, and that's eliminating the transportation, no other changes to this particular chapter of the municipal code. The next one, uh, beginning on page seventy five, walks you through the changes in the single family zone. I don't know if any of you have in your spare time gone through our zoning code, but it tells you what's permitted, the densities, the bulk standards. And so this is eliminating anything that had to do with, with the residential four designation. What page are you on? Uh, it begins on page seventy five, chapter twenty two sixteen. Yeah. Oh, thank you. Um, so it's, so the reason I was breaking this up, this is, this is the cut and dry, very easy, not a whole lot of conversation. When we get to phase two, there's going to be, all right, is this really what we want to do with this helping us get to where we want to achieve? So, um, and the, if you've never looked through the zoning code, the residential chapter is the one that also educates you, there's, um, should go back. Like beginning on kind of a mix of definitions when you get to the bulk requirements, beginning on page eighty. And, um, it includes some visuals to talk about what's a cul-de-sac, what's a front yard setback, what is impermeable surface? Yeah, and so it, it is, I think, really user friendly. There's a lot of these terms, you're like, what the heck are they talking about? So these are some nice graphics to, um, provide a visual. So the next major change is page one of three through one ten, and that is a complete strike through of transportation zoning district. Uh, the one thing I do want to follow up with our city attorney is I've worked in jurisdictions where right of way is just right of way. I've worked in jurisdictions where you bring your zoning to the center line. So I just want to follow up with him, my, my goal is to just keep this as right of way. It's the cleanest, and then we just do some, um, a few definitions of what's allowed in, in right of way, so that's.
Yeah, this whole section will wind out.
Yes, we're gone.
Yeah.
They'll go away, yeah. And so, uh, you know, the, the best thing to explain this is like, if you look on page four, in the right of way, there is accessory dwelling unit. That's all by washcloth. They're not going to allow a house. And so, it's like, I don't understand um, why this will happen. But anyway, so that's, that's really what's going away. Any questions?
Um, going back to the, to the map with the, um, with the planes and the.
Yeah.
If, um, if, when that sells and if it, you know, if it goes through and the PUD owns it, um, do we still need to keep that in there until the next comprehensive plan update? Or would there potentially be changes pretty quickly after just because of the current height restrictions?
So if when, place it that way, the airport is officially closed. And I'm, uh, we are still trying to understand that process. We reached out to, um, the Washington State Department of Transportation Aviation Division. And they said, well, the city should buy that land because small airports are going away and they're important. Um, there is a process through the FAA, and I assume there's a process with the state to close that airport. So once that happens, the city council could just repeal, um, I'm sorry, I can't remember the chapter off the top of my head that talks about the airport overlay, that would go away. Part of the work that we would need to go through, I shouldn't say we need, I would recommend, is reassess the height limits throughout the city. Because that, the airport overlay, as you can see, takes up more than half of the community, and it's really limiting. Um, so it's a conversation that we can't start.
Until it's sold, but it's, so it's all hypothetical.
Yes.
That's just what I was wondering is, does the way the plan is, does it limit us to not be able to readdress that until the next? But it's something that a conversation could happen if that move is made and it's going to no longer be an airport.
Absolutely, yeah. And, and we would have to make amendments to the comp plan because that is included in there. It's in, uh, both the transportation and, and, uh, land use chapters. But the city council could repeal that, that section of the code that will not automatically change your height limits, that will require a follow up code conversation, because right now, most of the city is maxed out at thirty five feet with a few exceptions, North Kelsey, uh, and downtown, you can go higher, but you have to have a combination of residential and commercial in both of those. So, future discussion. Uh, so that, that is a very quick overview of phase one to bring the city's regulations into consistency with the comp plan.
And public hearing tentatively on February twenty fourth?
Yeah. And so I will bring it back one more time. I just want to make sure I captured everything. Again, I do want to talk to the city attorney about, um, his guidance on the right of way because I've seen it done both ways, just to get his input. And then I just have to finish my work to get stuff off to, uh, the CPO review that needs to go to ecology, and then we'll need to, or I'll need to get it, um, reviewed by commerce. It would be a sixty day review clock because it is part of your comp plan, the implementation piece.
Any other questions or discussion? Nope. Okay, moving on, this is also state agenda item seven point four, local permitting introduction.
So this year, um, the next item after this is your program of work, but we have still several state mandates that we are working on. Uh, this one, local permitting, House Bill fifty two ninety, actually went into effect on January first, regardless if we made a change or not. And, um, way back when I was a baby planner, this was referred to as regulatory reform. And it was ensuring that the state, or the state was mandating that the cities were consistent and being, um, uh, expedient doing the reviews. Well, COVID hit in twenty twenty, and even before that, we started having housing crisis. So there is a lot more pressure now on communities. Come on, let's get going, let's make it as quick as possible while still looking at your codes, but they've now changed the review clocks. And so that's what this House Bill is really about. So this page, um, that I had Hannah pull up for you, it is page, um, one twelve of your agenda bill. And these are really the key pieces of this new legislature. Uh, the first one is, as I've already mentioned, it actually went, the new time clocks went into play January first. Uh, the second thing is we have to provide the Department of Commerce our first report from tw- uh, twenty twenty four of all of the land use permits we had, how long it took us to go through these processes. And Hannah is helping me with that, and we are still waiting for the Department of Commerce to tell us what they want, because that was also in the, uh, the law. So just walking through, um, if you have an interior model for residential, you cannot require an additional review such as a site plan, which is what we typically require for a multi, a new multifamily project or commercial. The next one is the, uh, time clocks. So in the nineties, that clock was a hundred and twenty days. Was a few exceptions. So for final subdivisions, you have to get it done in thirty days. That's the, basically you've gone through the plating process, you've done all your improvements, and now it's, you're signing off on the map. So that, that time clock did not change. The other one is preliminary subdivisions, that's a ninety day clock. From what I can tell, that this new law does not supersede those existing criteria. So when I get later in this presentation, I'm kind of walking through, we're going to have some footnotes. These are the new clocks, but these are still regulated, that didn't change. And so the new clocks are based on your reviews. So in Monroe, we, we followed regulatory reform. So we have the first category, which are administrative permits. Doesn't require public noticing, it's, it's, I wouldn't say an over the counter, but staff is reviewing to make sure it's consistent with the city's code. And so that clock went from a hundred and twenty days to sixty five. And the change also got tightened because it wasn't, you could argue that you could use calendar days, working days, and this state law is very clear, it's calendar days. So as soon as you deem that application complete, you have sixty five days to make a decision. So the next category is administrative decisions, but with noticing. So there's still no public hearing, it's just a notice. That clock has changed from a hundred and twenty days to a hundred days. And then the final category is if you have a, um, if you require a public hearing. So that would be a subdivision, conditional use permit, a variance. All of those, we have public hearings before our hearing examiner. That time clock actually went to a hundred and seventy days. And it's really taken into account when an application comes in, we have twenty eight, twenty eight days to deem it if it's complete. If it's not complete, we tell the applicant, you're missing this, or this doesn't look right. They resubmit, then we have fourteen days to go, yep, it looks good, or nope, it's still not right. And then from that point, uh, if it's not a straight administrative, we have to do the notice of application that has a fifteen day window. And so it's, it's keeping all these different clocks in mind when they set the new, all right, no notice, sixty five days, notice but no hearing, a hundred days, notice and public hearing, a hundred and seventy. The next piece of this is if the city does not, well, there's two options, the city can reduce its fee structure to not collect the entire fee amount upfront. We can hold ten to fifteen percent back. Or we collect the whole amount, but if we do not need that new time clock, we have to refund the money. And so there's a breakout ten percent to twenty percent, depending on which clock we missed and how far off it was. And so this will also require amendments to Title Three, Title Three? That's right, uh, which is where all of our fees are adopted in the municipal code. The next couple of items, um, I've already touched on the reporting, um, couple of other interesting things that I did not include in your agenda bill, but in your, um, some of the handouts, which I'll go to the page for you. We'll be go to page. Beginning on page thirteen, the very, no, I'm sorry, page fourteen, section nine. Nope, I was right, page thirteen. So there's a new section eight. And it has, not only are we telling you, you need to do this, we're suggesting that you do all these other things, or a menu of items. The catch, though, is on page fourteen where it says, uh, two A. After January first, twenty twenty six, a county or city must meet, must adopt additional measures as set forth in the first part of this. So uh, we are still having internal conversations, but we wanted to have this conversation with you because there is a little bit of flexibility on how you think we should proceed on the height classification. But also, are there things that we'd like to consider now? Or do we want to wait until January first of next year, when we're being mandated to yet again ratchet down or look for other ways to be more efficient? So that's, put in the back of your brain, of, here's more things to think about. And okay, and then the next items, I just gave you the specific language of, uh, the bill that passed. And then a summary, the bill final, the final bill report kind of gives you a summary of what they were trying to achieve, why it came about. So just really, um, general background information. And then the next, um, handout for you is the Department of Commerce. Yeah, absolutely. No, that's good.
I was kind of thinking in my head, it had a, so on the, going back to the, the clocks.
Yeah.
So the timeframe, so if you don't, if the city doesn't meet the timeframe, is it take away from their fee or does it approve what they're trying to get?
We have to refund their, their.
So, so it's a monetary issue, not, yeah, an approval.
Correct, but those clocks are still there. So if, if the city, so you get in. Correct, but those clocks are still there. So if if the city, so you get in a preliminary short flat and. Uh Hannah stamps it, date stamps it, and uh staff. Whatever reason, we miss, we don't respond in twenty eight days. On day twenty nine, that application is deemed complete, and that a hundred days, that's a type two permit. That hundred day clock starts now. And so if the hundred days goes by and we don't take action, it is deemed approved. So there's still.
I thought I was reading something about the approval, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that that didn't go away. That's in current state law.
Okay.
The new piece is you have to refund fees if you do not meet the clock. And in none of none of this, they did not take away our ability to say, we need to stop the clock. This information is not correct. Or we need more information, or uh during the notice of application, these three three things came about that we had no idea. You need to resolve them. So we still have the ability to stop the clock in those instances. Um, okay, so the next section is um just the Department of Commerce. There were a lot of links in there. Uh click on it. It's good. Just background information. And then finally, the piece. Thank you. And just kind of, I wanted to walk you through some of the changes in my coloring. Um so the first one, so the very top, that um administrative interpretation. Today, that's a type one, and I'm actually recommending it go to type two, because if somebody comes in and they're like. Actually, it can give you the airport. The P U D was um. Their opinion of reading our code is that outdoor storage was a permitted use. Our reading of our code was, no, it's prohibited because of X, Y, and Z. And so the thinking to move it to a two is we would notice people if it affected a particular property. Because that interpretation will stand either as this is how the code, what it means, or. If the hearing examiner said, oh, city, I don't know what you're talking about, then it would be whatever the person who doesn't agree with us. That becomes the law until we go through a code change. So it's not just, oh, you're making an interpretation. It has consequences. On how your code is applied. And so right now, there's no notification. Nobody knows about it. And so my um suggestion is to consider it as a type two, which at least requires notification. Be on our city website, it would go in the newspaper, so there'd be some information. The next one is also um. Has to do with the site plans. Right now, we only do them in one form, and what I'm recommending is actually do a site plan review. That is CIPA exempt, which means that really there's no, should be a straightforward, it meets code, move forward. If it triggers CIPA, then it should be a type two that requires uh notifications, or something. Something bigger that's happening on the property, and that would also be triggered if there were uh critical areas. And so about that one, and I'll I'll recap when I come back to you, that, these are the things I introduced, and I'm looking for guidance on these particular items. The next one, uh the purple color, the final short flat and subdivision, this is what I was talking about. We're gonna have to do some kind of a notation. This new law does not supersede our existing time clocks to review final short flats. Uh boundary line adjustments. Oh, I was asking Anita and uh Amy and Leanne, who have all been here longer than I am. Why does the B L A was CIPA? It a a boundary line adjustment is a very straightforward process. It's it, so the only thing you can think of is if it were. Uh combined with another application. So this one will actually be uh eliminated, doesn't exist. Um. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. The green color. So that is the accessory dwelling units, and when Amy comes back to you, that is one of the other state mandates for us. We um. It's really making it easier and enticing people to consider constructing them in an accessory dwelling unit. And so right now, we notify anybody within five hundred feet of a property owner, because there's a lot of our requirements today. Since the state is uh loosening those requirements, we think it's appropriate to just make it a type one, because it will be very. It either does or does not meet the requirements. There's really not a lot, um, there's not a lot to stay like there is today. The biggest change that uh will be coming is today. You have to, uh the property owner has to live in the primary residence or the accessory dwelling unit. We cannot do that anymore. And so um anyway, just knowing where we're going, it's a suggestion for you to consider. Um and then. The purple again is, there's existing time clocks that are different. Um, the next one, so so preliminary, so binding, a binding site plan is kind of like a subdivision. But not. And so um our current process, we break it up each at. We're treating it the same as a subdivision from a residential perspective. So if you have nine or fewer lots. It's treated as a type two permit. So we notify you, there's no public hearing. If it's ten or more units, then you have to go to a hearing examiner. For the jurisdiction I came from previous to this, a binding site plan was a binding site plan. You didn't distinguish by number of lots. And it's more typically been used to um crap cut out for commercial and industrial properties. It's a much more streamlined pro- um process. So that's something that I will also be looking at you all for consideration. And um so then there's the oddball one, um our temporary encampments code. It has a separate process that's not documented in twenty two eighty four. And so um I'm recommending that we incorporate that, figure out which is the right process to review. There are a lot of stipulations under state law on how this is to be processed, so make sure it's consistent with that. But at least try to make it similar to how we process everything else. And so I will better articulate that before our next meeting. And then the very bottom talks about all the items that are either exempted through the new law or are legislative, which are automatically. There's not a time clock on the types of processes. A lot of information, any question?
Okay. All right, moving on to seven point five. Which is the draft twenty twenty five language word format.
Yeah, that just. Okay, so as I mentioned, there's still a lot of state mandates that we are getting through this year. Um and so quickly, um I did start, uh this is really for Brandy. I started that um kind of like the parking lot. After our table, I feel like I missed something from last year. So if you take a look at that and you're not, I feel like you had mentioned something and I didn't capture it. So um as we're going through this, that is my parking lot. The front, the top part in the table are the things that we need to get through. And a huge caveat is, this isn't anything like what happened last year. We were um told we needed to look at our downtown commercial. You you're always gonna have something pop up that you do not anticipate when you're putting this together. To the best of our abilities. These are the things that we are hoping to accomplish. Um so just really quickly walking through, I'll also let you know who the lead planner is. So the permitting, that's mine, just went through that, city wide rezone, just gave you an introduction. Uh Amy Bright, our planner, will be doing the A D U. Uh Leanne Barr will be doing the U D R uh conversion of structures to residential. So this is kind of a companion to the A D U, and it's in uh zones that are more commercial, commercially zoned. But also allowed for residential. So that'd be um. Well, the A D U one, once that gets done, Sherry Novak, who's been here a couple of times, she lives in the downtown historic area. She's still in the residential side, but the A D U, this code amendment will help her. Um if you are on the other side of Legley, that designated commercial, and you want to do that per garage. This is the section that would allow you to do that. So um. That, those first three. Well, excuse me, the the A D U, the conversion are both due by June thirtieth of this year, so it's a pretty aggressive schedule. Uh the next one is the Community Production Act. So this has been in place since the nineteen nineties. And the goal was to reduce fossil fuel consumption, uh air pollution and traffic congestion. And a city becomes affected when you have an employer that has a hundred employees. Who start between six and nine A M, Monday through Friday. And so we have Department of Corrections, we have um. The school districts, Canyon Creek cabinets, and there's one, one more. And every so often, the legislature reviews the law. They've made one substantial change back in the early two thousands. But we are still required to go through and update our plan. And subsequently, we have to update the municipal code because they're together. And so um Anita Marrero is the lead on that one. You might have seen on our website last year, there were some surveying that we were doing. That was part of that project. So this year is the cut and dry, getting through the plan adoption, which will be done, I believe, by resolution. And then the code amendments that support that will be done by ordinance, and so she's got that later in the year. Uh, critical areas, that one I'm taking on uh starting kind of mid-year. The state made some minor modifications after the city last updated critical areas in twenty nineteen. I um I have been looking to see what other A uh agencies have already gone through updates. So some of the things that are very clear are, we need to revise our string definitions. They're correct in the critical areas chapter, but they are not correct in the definitions. So there's changes like that. Uh there's again, an emphasis of avoidance over mitigation. Um, there have been some changes in how you define the um buffer area for wetlands. And so there's a few things that we will need to refine. And that's due by the end of the year. Um, so the next. Yeah, the next two are together. The um interim R seven to allow townhomes that currently is not permitted in that zone. But it is one of the ide- ideas that um Anita has already brought to you as part of that middle housing. Again, the middle housing is encouraging duplex, triplex, fourplex, cottage um cottage housing, townhomes. In your s- your typical single family or detached residential neighborhood. The Monroe thirty annexation just got approved by the Boundary Review Board. But they, the city did not approve it because when it went to council, the council said, whoa. Uh, we have future car plan identified for here, and we want you to have a mix of housing types. Because the middle housing is going to take longer, we are looking at doing an interim regulation. Very, being very strategic for the R seven. And so that would allow the Monroe thirty to finish its development agreement to. Uh enabling the city to get what we are asking for and allow them to move forward. So it's. It's a two-pacer. Once the middle housing gets finalized through uh planning commission council, the interim R seven would go away. Because the middle housing would be an allowed option to encourage people to look at different development within the detached neighborhoods. Does that make sense? Okay. Uh and then, as I mentioned, phase two uh comp plan updates, that's the stuff that Brandy was asking about. That's the overlay. Uh in the general commercial along US two and the work in the downtown core. Um Anita does plan to come back again with a multifamily tax exemption program that's really been on hold for over a year. We were looking at the geographies and how that would all work. Um and then the next two are things that happen on an annual basis, the capital improvement plan. And um if anybody other than the city wants to make an amendment to the comprehensive plan, that process begins in the summer. And so if we get something, uh Amy Bright is the the lead with that. Any questions? Comments? Okay, so this is one of the items that I will need, uh will put under action for you, because you will need to bless it. And then we'll give it to um, or you'll have to approve it, and then we give it to the city council, and there's, I guess, this is what we need you to do this year.
So.
Yeah.
Our next meeting. We need to go over the first one, right? Because it's showing that if we have a tentative, you know, um. A hearing on the the second February date.
Yes.
Right, so we have to jump on that one right away.
Yeah, and the A D Us will be coming back and the conversion of residential. You're gonna have some really full meetings through June. And then you're gonna get a little bit of a reprieve, and then we've got um. Three, I think it's three more, and that, again, that's assuming the council doesn't say, we have this emergency, we need you to look at it. Um, I think um I have this new, I'm I'm, I've been playing with tools to help me keep organized with my planners. I might share that with you, just so you can kind of see. For the policy ones, I've got um all of the planning commission dates, all of the council dates, the public hearings. I'll bring that to you, just so um it it helps you to see what we're expecting of the planning commission.
So on each one, it is showing, hold hold a public hearing.
Yes.
On any, it looks like several of these, it's not gonna be each one an individual public hearing, right? They'll probably have some stuff together. Or not necessarily.
No, each one of these is a separate item, but.
They all have to have a separate hearing.
You can have multiple, if it might, yes, you can have more than one public hearing in one meeting.
Yeah.
But each one legally needs its own public hearing.
Yep.
But you can't have more than one item in one public hearing.
You could, but the way we have this structured is really following the new laws that went into place. I mean. From my perspective, like the best one that we could blend together are that um the accessory dwelling unit and conversion of structure. Because they, they really do go together, but one's addressing commercial properties and one's addressing the single family.
I'm not saying we need to, I was just kind of wondering if that.
Yeah. Yeah, um, plan on like three public hearings in one night. That's open, close, open, close, open, close.
Right.
So as you say, you, we need a motion to send this, not tonight, next meeting?
Yeah, and um I will work with Hannah, so this item we will put under um. We will make it very clear in the heading where it says um. Where is it? Requested action.
Yeah.
We will spell out, this is what we need coming.
Okay, any other questions or discussion of those?
Let's have one other, um, while I was reading through, um, some of the area we know is. Uh, sorry, that's for our four, he has a lined out, so taking out all the hard fours. So do you want to know if you missed one?
In the mapping?
Or in the text.
Oh, yes.
And so the seven point three, where. Um, well, not overall, but in just, it's page twenty in that section. Because like when we read it on the agenda, it'll tell you each section. I don't know if you have it that way.
What's what's the, what's the header?
It's in seven point three. Let me go to, see if I can.
No, no, I found one already on page seventy six of the packet under land use. Um, I will. If you could just send me an email.
On I, how I. When I, how I, when I click on each one and I read it, it'll start the numbering over.
Oh, gotcha.
So. Oh, I found it. Okay, so it's on page. It says page two of twenty-eight. What's the sender land use, so twenty-two.
Yep.
Okay, so for, so the second line up from that first pair of.
Yep. That's the one I just found.
Okay, okay, okay.
Is that the only one that you found?
The only one I saw.
Okay.
But you want to know those kinds of things.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want a positive, I made a note, so.
Yeah. Had I gotten to do my life over, I would have been a English major specializing in editing. And then a planner as a secondary.
Would have been a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. I had a pretty good job. We had to do a lot of editing and my boss at the time said the way, the best way to edit is to read it backwards instead of forward, that way you catch all your mistakes better. I don't think your brain work has to actually focus, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not reading per se, you're focusing on what.
I, I have a coworker in the office who's a magazine and she doesn't, she's not planning, that's not her background. But she's a really good editor, so you find those people as well. Yeah, if you find any more of those, please let me know, I'd appreciate it.
All right, moving on to section eight, discussion by commissioners and staff. And then eight point one, we will start with Hannah, who will have the community development reports.
Right, so for our last report of the year, we sort of squished together November and December into one big summary for our end of year report. So you'll see under the highlights, under building permits, they summed up, we issued eight hundred and four total building permits in twenty twenty-four. Under building inspections, we conducted a total of two thousand and forty-nine building inspections in twenty twenty-four. Code enforcement cases, they just summed up the number of code enforcement cases for the month, thirteen opened and twenty-eight closed. Business licenses, in November, there were a hundred and seventy-six business licenses and a hundred and ninety-five in December. I'll give you a chance to look over the pre-application meetings. I just have a couple of notes on some of those, that quick crap car wash. That location is where Energy Auto Sales is there on State Route two. Um, on the south side, next to the gas station, next to the gas station.
Has it taken place in the car wash or?
That's what they're proposing, yeah. In December, the Monroe West Preliminary Flat, we have received an application for that thirty-nine lot preliminary flat. It's in complete review right now. And the new preschool on one hundred and forty-seventh street, that's the former pharmacy building that's been sitting empty for a while now. Yeah, Bob?
What was the, what's the wireless communication facility, is it in Canada?
Yes. One of those Bintol antennas.
Is it going to be a stumpy one or like a tree, like a tree or?
It doesn't look like a tree. Yeah. For the project highlight, does anyone have any more questions about pre-ops for the month? Sorry. For the project highlight, Kate was awesome and wrote up a really great summary about the comprehensive plan. And we included a picture from the signing, some of you guys were there.
I did not get the memo that it was ugly versus what. But at least it was rewritten.
Not too many updates under the projects. Here are our building permit charts. For the building department, some of their updates. Ted Corey, our plans examiner, has successfully passed three difficult tests to receive his building official certification, which is very exciting, we're very proud of him. And Stacy Criswell, our building official, has passed his permit tech certification, which is also very exciting and we're very proud of him too. And he was nominated to the ICC Residential Building Exam Development Committee as an alternate. We have had our kickoff meeting, we've actually had several meetings with them now with the Davenport group to start the implementation process for our permitting software. So that's very exciting, this has been a long time coming. And we are currently down one building permit tech and the position has been posted. So if you guys know anyone that might want to be a building permit tech, send them our way. Code enforcement. The year-end totals is seventy-nine open cases and a hundred and seventy-seven resolved. So Kevin's done a great job this year. Temporary sign cleanup, he did one on November eighteenth. And he's going to start doing ongoing temporary sign cleanups, so it's not just going to be the ones every six months.
We're in twenty-two thousand.
Yes.
Is that our friend with the sign column?
No. No, that's been resolved.
Yep.
So what happened? If they have a seat operation, what's, what's next?
Oh, on the, what, the one with the high fine amounts. We're in conversations with our attorney, trying to figure out how finance can do the next step on their side. Sounds like there's also. I'm getting them confused. I know our, our attorney is definitely involved. We're trying to figure out this stuff.
It seems like it must be a hard one.
It's been ongoing for a while.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah. So there were a hundred and three new business license applications and two hundred and sixty-eight business license renewals in November and December. Here are the new brick and mortar businesses for November and December. Sorry, it's kind of wonky, I was trying to paste them in there, but I couldn't do it. One I'm excited about is Wild Birds Unlimited is coming back.
Thought they're back.
Yes, they're coming back after they closed. They're going to be.
They're up over there. Where the licensing is.
Yeah, over there in the Safeway Shopping Center again. I was so sad when they closed. And then he's done. The comp plan is done, been adopted. Thank you all for your hard work on that.
So I'll do a quick update on the code work. The end of last year, the downtown commercial was approved. And then again, that was adding in some government uses requiring a conditionally used permit. The other item that added in were the small or the event spaces. And there's differentiation small versus larger, the small is a just a permit. The larger still requires a condition use permit. So thank you for all your work on that one. And then Phase One code cleanup, the city council approved that last week. So that was a lot. The important piece of that one actually is the Monroe Christian School was really waiting on that, they want to do a preschool. And that was one of the items that was in that code cleanup, so again, thank you.
And as far as annexations, Kate gave you an update on Monroe thirty, on Monroe thirty earlier. And that is really the only development on annexations right now.
There is actually a little bit of movement on Connor. So that one, I think I've explained to this group, Connor was really interesting. It is a single property, it should have been straightforward, super easy. Turned out that Tester Road is actually in the wash dot right of way for SR five twenty-two. And so the state has been in the process with the county to give the land back. And we kind of got caught in that a little bit. Because typically what we would do is we would take the boundary to the far side of the road. We would take over the responsibility to maintain it. But because this additional work was going on, the county didn't want us to just go to the edge of Tester Road. They wanted us to go to where the state had been working with. So that finally got resolved the end of last year. Amy has reached out, Amy Bright is the, the lead on this. The county, she was waiting on comments back from their stormwater group, that's the only thing holding it up. I told her, just start going, because it is small enough that we can request an exemption based on size and value in state law. And so when we get through the BRB process, she will be pursuing that. So her next step right now is scheduling a public hearing before the city council for the sixty percent petition. And then hopefully it will be done soon.
Any questions on the department report?
Thanks, guys. All right, moving on to discussion by commissioners. You can start with you, Brandy.
All right, hello. Yes, I want to take this opportunity to just say that I am excited about our new scope of work this year. And, you know, getting through the comp plan was great. And now it sets us up for some of these other changes that we can start implementing with that being our roadmap. So I, yeah, New Year, I'm excited and thank you. It looks like we got a small group here. I'm also excited to see who we get to our new, new members. So it's all new stuff, twenty twenty-five, so thank you. Oh, one other thing, I know sometimes we mention things that we do or we're doing outside of here. I want to make, remember or remind people that one of my passions outside of here is youth mental health and fairness and equity for kids at school. And so that's something that I'm also working on continuing to work on this year. And the way that I bring that to planning things are when we talk about gathering places and making sure that there's connections and safe walkability and things like that, so. All right, take care, thanks everyone, happy new year.
Thank you. Bob?
I'm just anxious to get going, we're going to get two new members and we've got some exciting work to do.
I agree, and it's nice actually starting this year, different than the last year, I know a bit more. And so looking at what we have before to go through, it's like I actually have understanding. And it is exciting to see what we've done this past year and then what we're going to follow up and do. So and, and, you know, having two new people in the board will be, will be nice too. And see a big ring in the world will be great. Happy New Year.
Huh?
Oh, yeah, I, I, and I feel something important, I have to print it and I highlight my different things. So if I don't, if I just keep reading, it's in and out.
Yeah.
I have to figure out, have a little difference, so I can keep it in.
Thank you, staff, Kate and Hannah. We have a small group between commissioners and staff tonight, it's quite small to start the new year. But I'm also excited for all the projects that are on the, on the docket moving forward. And just thank you for all the information presented tonight too, which you'll be hearing more about in the meetings to come. And then we have a little stretch of, it's been sunny, cold, but sunny. Yeah, it looks like we might have some chance of snow next week. One thing right now. But I got to spend some time at Lake Tides weekend, which is nice because, and it was busy, like just people walking around the lake with dogs, bikes, kids, rollerblades in the park, a bunch of kids. So it was just really nice to see that happening again with a little sunshine, it was probably bleeding. But it's just always nice to see it, even when it is really cold outside. So. Yes, I'm blowed up, right? And that's it for me. So Kate, do you have anything to?
Yeah, actually, and I need to get the more information for you, but talking about parks, our Parks Director, Mike Farrell, is retiring in February. My understanding is the job posting is already out there. But I remember the day he was confirmed at city council, my first round. And so it's just going to be a, he's leaving a big hole. But I'm confident that those are still there and that are hiring process. We will continue to have amazing parks and one of the things that shines in Monroe. Other than that, just happy new year, it's going to be busy and some of it's dry, but we'll make it as exciting as possible.
Yeah, anything else to add?
Tian Yan, one day, I'm trying to learn Chinese, Happy Lunar New Year. It's the year of the snake in two days, so. Hope everyone has a great new year and I'm looking forward to the upcoming work.
Don't worry about it.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor?
Hi.
All those. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy, for speaking, sticking through. I'm feeling great. Feel better.
Good night.